Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, the 25th, and the time is 1:01. Has the lobby been cleared? Yes, are we good on the lobby? Has the lobby been cleared? We good, Chief? Thank you. We are here today for our school board briefing meeting today. However, we're going to enter a five-minute recess. We'll come back at 1:06. Thank you.
It's...
Welcome back, everyone. It's 1:06. Thank you, everyone. So, we're going to proceed with our school board briefing meeting today. Does Superintendent have any changes or comments?
No changes. Well, actually, a change, Mr. Chair. We're going to move the final presentation listed as number four, the Independent Sales Tax/Surtax Oversight Committee. We're going to move that up to Agenda Item Number One due to the Chairman of that committee's schedule today. The other piece is I would like to, as the Board members are aware, I'd like to make the community and other people aware that we had to make a change in tonight's agenda. During the past six months, the School District of Lee County has been working alongside the Fort Myers Beach citizens, business leaders, town officials, and the mayor as we plan the best way path and as we plan the best path forward for Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. The district has been negotiating an interlocal agreement with the Town of Fort Myers Beach that was to be brought forth at the direction of the Board at the same time that you asked me to bring forward a decision to move forward on the building. Unfortunately, that ILA was received yesterday, and there is still now an additional need for a more in-depth review and additional negotiations based upon new language that's been added to the ILA. Therefore, the previously posted item on tonight's agenda will need to be pulled because the Board asked me to be sure we brought the decision moving forward along with the ILA. The district will continue to negotiate in good faith with the Town of Fort Myers Beach, and we believe that they are in that same position with us. We will bring forward an ILA to a future board meeting in May. This will ensure that not only the school board has enough time to review the documents so that you can make the most informed decision possible, but it also gives the public the opportunity to thoroughly review those items in a true seven-day posting. So, our recommendation at this time is, and we are moving forward on the agenda tonight with the Chair's permission, we'll be pulling the item for Fort Myers Beach Elementary. So, thank you.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Superintendent. Okay. We're going to proceed to, we're going to start with Item Four, then we'll be preceded at that point by Item One. Item Four is the Independent Sales/Surtax Oversight Committee and Director Malley, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce ISOC Chair, Mr. Steve Schimpf, who will be delivering the ISOC presentation to the Board today.
Good afternoon. I need to be personal, Armor. It's been years since you coached my kids at tennis. So, as mentioned by Susan, I'm Chairman of the Independent Sales/Surtax Oversight Committee and here to give you the annual report on that particular aspect of the district. We'll be going over a little bit of history as to the committee, a little bit as to what the voters approved when they approved it now five years ago, an overview of the construction and renovation projects, a look at additional sales tax-funded projects which are significant beyond renovation and new construction, an overview of the compliance requirements, some information as to what kind of community communication and engagement has been done to date, and also a recommendation as to what we see in the future with regard to community communication. For that, after that, I'll open it up for questions, and hopefully Susan will help me along the way. If I can't handle one, we'll let her do it. And the ISOC committee is proposed of what are considered, quote, "qualified" community members. They have an experience background broad across the community. There are a number of business people. We have people who have accounting background. Thankfully, we have employees who have retired from the district so that they have us, they can give us a perspective into the operations of the district. We have some people who are rooted predominantly in government in their background, but we cover a wide gamut of background types. We're also diverse. We represent the various community sides of our community. Where there are 15 members and two alternates, all of us are residents of Lee County. We serve as volunteers with no compensation. We cannot be a current district employee. We must be approved by the school board, and we do serve in staggering terms of two and four years. And the alternate members don't have voting rights. They do attend the meetings but don't have voting rights. The sales tax results to date have brought $385 million into the district has been received since March of 2023. There have been expended funds of $261 million, and the split between those two numbers are predominantly dealing with timing and the time that it takes to field the project and, of course, expend the funds, accomplish the work and expend the funds. There are four authorized spending categories in the enabling, call it legislation, or approval by the voters. That is, construction, safety, maintenance, capital maintenance, not the normal day-to-day maintenance, and technology. So far, we've created 3.7,000 new member seats, new student seats across the district. So, we've seated more than 3,700 people in new construction. 100% of our schools have received support, and if you go on the ISOC and the sales tax website, you can actually click on a school there and see specifically what has been done in that particular school location. A significant number of schools have been touched by security measures in particular. The construction and renovation projects, as I said, the 3,700 seats created represent about 3% of an increase in district seating capacity. We've had seven major projects completed, or Gateway High School and Lee High Acres Middle under construction, and I'll have a hard time pronouncing it. Ammanisir, and I'm sure I have that wrong, Elementary is under construction currently. We've completed two major renovation projects, Lee High Senior High School and James Stevens Pre-K. And we have three significant remodels in process, Franklin Park, Fort Myers, Technical, and Riverdale High School. So, that there's a lot happening from the sales tax dollars that would not otherwise be happening. Our safety upgrades have exceeded $81 million since we've started expending funds. They are considerable. They include routing of people in and out for safety reasons, communication improvements with our law enforcement community, communication improvements within the school, a number of safety things. We've provided 22,000 Chromebooks during COVID so that students that, when we were remote for the three-month period, students would have access and have their own Chromebook. We have provided 73,000 Chromebooks in what we call the Refresh Program, which takes the old ones that may not be working properly and retires them and makes sure that the students have current technology. We've installed classroom interactive video panels throughout the district and audio amplification systems that have helped considerably in the instructional process. There are multiple unseen capital projects that are replacing parts of our school that need it, new air conditioning systems that lead to more efficiency, roofs that need replacement, window systems that are being upgraded to be hardened schools, flooring that's being replaced, and electrical switchgear. Those five areas are the most significant, but there are about 20 areas of capital improvements that have been made throughout the district. Some of them are real obvious. It's not real obvious when you replace electrical switchgear that's 32-years-old and you can no longer get parts for, though. So, that some of these significant expenses are occurring within the district, and they aren't quite as visible to the public. In terms of compliance with the referendum requirements, our committee is very much aware of the four areas that we have to expend the funds or the district has to expend the funds within. At every meeting, the question is asked, are the projects that are being paid for with this in compliance with what the voters voted for? And is the finance report accurate as much as we can tell from the reporting? I would tell you that our members take this process very seriously. There are questions that come up, and they get answered. Sometimes, they need to be researched. But you have a curious group of taxpayers looking out for the taxpayer's dollar. In terms of communication and community engagement, the district predominantly has handled this to date. Media press releases, of course, on the projects that are underway are an ongoing effort. There's social media that constantly updates as to the most recent projects started and completed, and we have videos that go out under social media as to what's going on in the district. The website, if you have not visited it, please do. There are a number of buttons that give a taxpayer an opportunity to look into and see the things that are going on as relates to their sales tax. We have engaged, and the district has initiated an economic impact study on the economic impact of the sales tax legislation. That has been essentially completed, is now within the district and being reviewed for comment. We, our committee, has not yet seen it. We're looking forward to it. We think that the impact of the half-cent sales tax will be considerable in terms of economic activity. And last and not least, our committee has worked with a subcommittee for communication purposes over the last six to eight months. Kind of got off-track by Ian. If there's anyone who didn't get off-track by Ian, please raise your hand. Everybody got off-track by Ian. We hope to launch it in the fall of last year. Put that on hold when the Ian crisis came aboard. But we have, we have, our committee members have assembled a presentation that would offer to the public a view of what we are doing as a district with a half-cent sales tax. We've identified organizations that we would roll that out to, and we're prepared to do that. Those presentations will be part of what we're asking you to take action on today. Last and not least, in terms of communication and community engagement, if you look at what's on the slide, there's a little blurb here that gets inserted in the various sports programs as we field things, and there are a list of things that have happened in the individual school that someone might be visiting at that time. So, we're doing the best we can to communicate to the public that their dollars are being spent on the things that they voted to spend them on. I believe it's pretty apparent as you visit our schools and you start to see things that are new and fresh. This fall, and our recommendation is that you would come aboard in endorsing this effort, we're looking at fielding, ISOC committee members going to various service organizations and partners of the district, along with people from staff. And obviously, school board members are welcome to join us. We would, we would give the presentation to the Hispanic Chamber to start with, Kiwanis Clubs, the National Pan-Hellenic Council, Rotary Clubs, and the Foundation for Public Schools. And I think we agreed, Susan, with the Horizon Council potentially being one that's not listed here. But we would take that presentation out. I personally hope to get some feedback from the early ones. Do you want to know more, or did we overkill it in terms of the information? But basically, express to the public, particularly those people that are in a service organization as to what we're doing and where their dollar is going. With that, I'd open it up. Chris, I don't know, sorry, Dr. Berner, if you have comments and board discussion, and if I can answer questions, I'll be more than happy to.
Mr. Chair, my comments will be brief except to thank Mr. Schimpf for his service as well as the entire committee. The committee has turned over slightly with the new board members. I believe you have people with great experience. This is a difficult committee to seat because of the technical knowledge needed to review purchases and other things, and yet, we can't have active vendors who are participating in our construction program share the opportunity to also oversee construction. So, it's a delicate balance, which I think you have done a great job by your appointments and continuing to move forward. Clearly, our halfpenny sales is still good for a number of years, but we do still have more work to go, work to do. Lee County continues to be one of the exceptions in the state of Florida with continued growth. We are one of the few counties that is still seeing a significant increase in the number of students and families, and we still have an amazing amount of vacant property east of 75. So, we're going to continue to see develop to the east and to the northeast as we get up closer to our neighboring county to the north. So, really appreciate this opportunity. I think what we're doing to get the information out has been good to this point, but I also think there's an opportunity now to really begin to engage the public well in advance of this coming up for any type of renewal. I'll turn it over to the Chairman, Vice Chair, for comments and board discussion.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Persons?
How has the Ian impacted the sales tax revenues?
There has, and that question came up at our last meeting. There have been no sales tax funded expended in dealing with the Ian problems that we've had.
Specifically, have the revenues, I'm sure they went down a little bit, but now with all the construction, are they going up some?
You mean the revenues from the sales tax? From the test, I've sent both ways, Armor. The, when you have something occur, and you know, I was in the industry, as you know, when you have something occur like an Ian, there's a lot of economic activity that occurs in the rebuilding effort. It offsets to a significant extent the lack of economic activity from the destroyed facilities and the people who have lost employment. We have seen that the sales tax revenue that's come into the district has consistently either kept pace or slightly been ahead of what the projections were. So, we've been able to continue to do what's going out. Running parallel to that, the supply chain problems that preceded the storm and the labor difficulties that are occurring event have increased prices of things. The district, if through the capital planning process, not our committee, is the one that deals with the prioritization of what the funds will be expended for. It's important to note that we are in the business of looking at whether, on behalf of the taxpayer, the money's being spent as it was intended to be spent by what they're passed, but not prioritizing the projects amongst themselves.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Mr. Schimpf, thank you for being here and for your comprehensive presentation. Looking at Slide Three, where it talks about qualified community members, you kind of smiled and went over that super quickly. But you are an example of other individuals in the community that populate this committee that you bring automatic credibility to this report because of your reputation in this committee, I'm sorry, in this community, and because you are a community leader, you and others on the committee. It's very important, when you stand in front of this board and you say all of the expenditures have been in accordance with what the voters approved, people believe that because you said it. And I'm grateful for your work and your willingness to volunteer here. I am also really excited at the prospect of you and others on the committee going out to the public, to these service organizations, and talking about what you've learned and, again, bringing that credibility even further beyond the boardroom and beyond the committee. So, I'm, I mean, that's a suggestion you said. If we approve it, you have my 100% approval on that, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
I would tell you with regard to us stating that the expenditures have been in accordance, it's conceivable that in a detailed audit, there will be something that has been paid for with sales tax dollars that doesn't fall within the four parameters. I mean, I would tell you that with, when you start spending $270 million on various projects, that probably is somewhere in there. We have not been able to find it. But, you know, it really is to the best of our ability. I have had one-on-one meetings with staff people and raised areas myself where I had concern, you know, let's be careful and make sure we don't get over here because that's maintenance. That's not capital maintenance projects. They're very much aware of it. That interaction has been going on. Is it perfect? I don't think anybody on our committee would say, it's absolutely flawless. Bring in 1,000 auditors and you'll find nothing. I would say loud and clear, you will find nothing of substance.
Thank you so much for your service. Can you just, for the public's sake, could you just tell what you do? I think that's really important. I think Ms. Patrica brought up a...
I'm an old retired guy.
I know.
Years ago, I started a company here in town called Owen Ames Kimball. We built numerous schools in Lake County. I retired at the end of 2007, sold my stock in the company so that I had no financial interest. I was a part-time employee through '09 on, for the, for the calendar year '10. They asked me to come on Mondays because people apparently thought I was still doing something. So, I did that. At the end of 2010, my compensation totally stopped from the company, and I have no financial interest, but of course, a strong construction background. I continue to do work in the industry as an expert in various legal matters, and I'm excited that I'm on my last case at this point, and hopefully, it will wind up soon. It happens to be very large, but I'm still working in that regard.
Thank you so much. But we're also hiring an operations, a chief of operations. I didn't know if you have a spare moment. Thank you.
You know, I'm going from here to my church at 6 o'clock to give a report for, as I'm... for, as I'm chairman of our senior pastor nominating committee, and I appreciate the suggestion, but I've got God's plenty to do.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Schimpf, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for you and your committee members to the service for our community. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're, hopefully, we're doing a good job for you folks. We think we're doing a good job. We're working at it, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
Next up on the agenda is item number one, construction change order report with Mr. Rickenbacher.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Benir, Esquire de Perry Bruno, this is your capital change order report for February 2023. As you'll notice on the first slide, it's just a brief overview. We had direct material purchases, change orders, in the amount of $489,312.52, with tax savings returned to the district in the amount of $27,720.52. Non-direct material purchases in the amount of $47,816.52, all of which was returned to the district, and we had zero contingency adjustments to report. If you go to the following backup sheet, what you'll notice is we have five change orders. All of these are deductive change orders, which are project savings that are returned to the district coffers. And on the top sheet, you'll see a direct material purchase that was for Fort Myers High School. That is all of the welding laboratory exhaust hoods that we direct purchased and received the tax savings, so $27,000 was returned back to the district. Any questions?
Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Board members, questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rickenbacher.
Thank you. You have a good day.
You too. Moving on to item number two, France Law Group litigation presentation.
My name is William Shinoff. I'm an attorney with the France Law Group out of California. I want to start off with a little bit of background about myself, and then I'll get into this litigation. So prior to joining the France Law Group, I practice strictly education law, representing a majority of the school districts in Southern California as their general counsel and also acting as litigation counsel. I then moved over to the France Law Group three years ago, where I had our public entity practice representing public entities, but on the plaintiff's side. Three years ago, I, I began the litigation specifically representing school districts against Juul and Altria, dealing with the youth vaping epidemic, and I represented almost 1,000 school districts across the country in that case, which ended up being about 70% of the public entities involved in that litigation, which in December, we had some success, and we are currently actually in trial against Altria. During the time, prior to joining the France Law Group and while I've been in France Law Group, I've been investigating the matter regarding the harms of social media on our youth. And we, when we go into cases like this, which we handle on contingency fee, we do a lot of legal analysis into it, looking at the law, and then also looking at the facts and what we could present into a case before we go and jump into a venture like this, representing public entities. While we looked into it, there was, you know, one large hurdle we saw, which was the immunity that the social media companies have been using the past 10 years regarding litigation against them. Specifically, they use what's called Section 230 of the Communication Decency Act to go and prevent litigation against them. The Communication Decency Act was an act created by Congress in 1996 to, which was to promote the internet, to go and make sure that they were not going to be constantly sued, and we wanted the internet to be built. This was before social media companies even existed. But they have used that as a shield to protect themselves from liability. But over the past two years, the appellate courts across the country have taken a different view on the social media companies' immunity. And so what occurred three, three months ago at this point is the U.S. Supreme Court did hear oral argument about whether social media companies do have immunity. But what the immunity is specifically is about is regarding whether you are allowed to sue these companies on content posted by third parties. But what moved this case forward to us now bringing these lawsuits was two things. One was regarding the development of federal law regarding school districts bringing what we call public nuisance cases, which we developed in the Juul litigation. We now have very strong law regarding school district standing to bring these cases on behalf of the youth in, in their community to protect them. Two, what happened was a whistleblower that came forward from Meta. So Meta is the parent company of Facebook and Instagram. What, what this whistleblower, her name's Frances Hogg, and came, and she went and brought, went and disclosed internal documents of Meta to the Wall Street Journal, and Wall Street Journal went and did a full investigation into the company, and she went and spoke in front of Congress. And what she advised is that these companies, while there is a benefit to social media, there's no doubt about it, there's, there is great benefits to it for adults, but what there is, is a great harm to the youth through social media. And so what she advised is that these companies are in the business of addiction. The whole way they make money is through making sure that people are on their platform as much as possible. And that's not only because they get to sell, they get to go and sell ads, so you're constantly seeing ads on their platforms, but also they're collecting your data. But what they, they do know through their own internal documents is the harms that come with social media, that comes with the constant use of it. And so what, what they've advised is that, that there, there is a psychological effect to the social media, and whether it's being through the likes that you're see, you're seeing, you're getting the emails saying people are liking your messages, it's, you're getting a dopamine effect in your brain, just like with drugs, and you're constantly wanting it and needing it. But what they also know is that to keep children on their platforms, they need to go and push very harmful and divisive content, because that is what attracts them to it. That's what keeps them on it. And what a recent study in 2020 showed was that 74% of youth are at least using social media three hours a day. 24% said that they're using it more than seven hours a day. And so what that brings us to is there is now a disruption to the learning environment. Kids are constantly on their phone, whether they're messaging their friends, whether they're getting, you know, harmful messages from each other. And as I'm traveling the country, meeting with boards now, what principles, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school, what they've advised us is that this is not a weekly issue dealing with social media. It's not even a daily issue. It's an hourly issue, that they're dealing with issues related to social media. And so that brings us to the point of, well, what can we do to make change? And what can we do to make sure that these companies are doing the change that's necessary? Because they've had the opportunity. They've been warned. They've been sued, and they've, we've now seen, seeing change. We've now seen the state of Utah, they went and created legislation, putting now the onus on these companies to protect children. We've seen Arkansas do it recently. There was a bill that was just put forward in California regarding making changes to, specifically to protect children at this point, because they are not making the change. What this whistleblower advised is that there are very easy changes that these companies can make, but they are putting our children's well-being at, at the bottom, because they want to make sure they're profiting, because if they make these changes, they will not profit as much. So that's what we can do through our litigation, is make these changes, because legislation is now taking a very long time to develop, and while we hope that the legislation will eventually come into place to go force these companies to make change, us as attorneys, we can force them to make this change through what we call injunctive relief. So that's a federal court order requiring them to, to make change. So specifically in this litigation, what we're going to be asking them to is to change their algorithm, because right now, their algorithm goes and pushes this harmful content onto them, and we know they can make the change, and that can be done. Second, we want is parental controls, because right now, the way that these platforms work is we have exactly, so we have Snapchat, which messages disappear. They can be timed. They can, they can do it, and your parents will never know what was being sent or done. We, we, we want them to go and put parental restrictions. In the past two weeks, we've been filing these cases now for about a month and a half. All of a sudden, TikTok goes, Facebook now, all of a sudden, you're now seeing apps, little warnings popping up, hey, now we have a parental restriction. That's great. They're making the change, but we want a court order requiring them to, to keep this in place. We also want there to be the age verification. While they say you need to be 13, there's nothing they're doing to actually verify the age, and working with the parents, because at the end of the day, there, there should be some parental involvement, because they're still minors, to go make sure there's age verification. And then the other portion of what we're trying to do in this case on the non-monetary component is opening, opening up the lines of communication between school districts and these companies, because it's every week now at this point, you are seeing either there's children committing suicide as a result of things that were put on social media, you're seeing threats to schools as a result of social media, and school districts are contacting these companies, never returning their calls.
Excuse me one second. Could you hold on? Board attorney?
So Mr. Shinoff, I know that your slides are not moving. I noticed that. So I don't know if your intention was to be able to, so the board can follow where you are.
Yeah. Yeah. I wasn't sure if you guys were provided a printed copy or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Of course. Appreciate it. So what we're also trying to do is open, open up the lines of communication between these companies and the school districts, because time and time again, we're hearing about school districts contacting these companies to ask them to remove a post because of something that harmful that's been put on by one of their students, and unfortunately, at times, it's too late. The child has harmed themself, and the, the content is still up there. The other part, too, is taking threats. When there's a threat to a campus, obviously, every threat we've got to take is to be credible and making sure that these companies are working with the school districts to, to handle these threats. So that's the, the non-monetary component, so. Now this, as I did not go based off the slides, this is going over a little bit of the facts regarding this case. Now, at the same time that this whistleblower came out in front of Congress, the U.S. Surgeon General advised that we do have a youth mental health crisis at this point, and a, a large part of that mental health crisis is a result of social media. About four months ago, the U.S. Surgeon General advised that children under the age of 13 should not even be using social media because of how harmful it is. Now, regarding the benefits, now we, I went over the non-monetary component of what are the benefits for public entities to be involved in this litigation. Now, there is a monetary component. So in this case, one of our main claims against the company is a public nuisance claim. And under the public nuisance claim, we have a right to seek what's called abatement funds. And that, what that is, is legal damages to go and pay, to go and fix the harm that these companies have caused. Now, specifically, what we're going to be seeking is funding to go and deal with mental health issues on campus, so be able to go and give funds for school districts to go and increase either school counselors or any other mental health staff, provide, provide further educational opportunities for students, security, and those are the types of monetary component, because we want to hold these companies accountable monetarily instead of relying on taxpayer dollars to fix the problems that they've created. So to kind of give you a little background on my firm, I wanted to focus on just the past three years, some of the successes we've had on going against these companies. An unfortunate part of living in California is we do have wildfires, and those wildfires, unfortunately, are also caused by our electrical companies. In the past three years, we've, we represented almost 10,000 individuals against Pacific Gas and Electric. We have three electrical companies in California. Pacific Gas and Electric is one of the largest ones, and we recovered almost $13.5 billion on behalf of our clients. We also, at the same day, there was wildfires in Southern California, which were caused by Southern California Edison. That burnt down all, some very significant portions of Los Angeles, and we've recovered in excess of $1.8 billion on behalf of our clients. We were also, as I said, involved with the Juul litigation, which resolved this last December, and there are a number of other, other matters that we've resolved, and that's kind of the background of success of going against large corporations. In, in this litigation, you know, we will be representing over 1,000 school districts again in this matter. This is not a class action. This is what's called a mass action, so we will be filing individual actions on behalf of every, every school district. They will, there is already what's called a multi-district litigation that's been consolidated in the Northern District of California, where all the school districts cases will be. In the next, I'd say, nine months, there will be a selection of what we call bellwether school districts, which will be the first six school districts to try their cases. We will be going and determining which districts we believe are the best to, to go and represent that. Normally, we try to have large, small, and medium-sized school districts to provide a good representative model. And so, so dependent on what, where your district is regarding whether you're a bellwether or a non-bellwether, will be determined on how much work your staff will have to do, and we leave that up to our clients regarding whether, what role you'd like to play.
I should have said, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, board attorney.
I have a question for you, Attorney Shinoff. One, are you involved in any of those bellwether cases? And two, are you involved in the multi-district action that's pending in Northern California at this time?
So first, yes. I do, the first trial that's going on right now, it's not my client. In the future trials, I will, those will be, one of my clients has been selected. Now regarding the current multi-district litigation in San Francisco, yes, I, I do. I already have about a little over 80 clients in that litigation that we've already filed for.
Thank you.
Yes. And so, so at that point, once there is a selection, we would go in, let's say, if your district was selected to be one of the bellwether trials, we would go back to you and to decide whether benefits of being it, and what it would look like if that would be something that your district would be interested in being involved in. So that, so that's regarding the, the time consumption. So if you're a non-bellwether, it's going to be strictly to go and complete a discovery questionnaire, which should take up to 10 hours completing that, and that would be the staff involvement in this case. Regarding the cost to the district, so we work on this on a contingency fee basis, so there is no financial risk for the district to be involved in the case, because if there is no financial recovery, the district will pay no fees and no costs. And then all, as well, we also do this on a reduced contingency fee, because normally, the standard in the industry is 40% of the recovery. For my public entity practice, we do it at 25%, no matter how long the, the litigation will take. So with that being said, I wanted to open up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shinoff. I'm going to ask Mr. Superintendent if he has any questions or comments, then followed by Madam Board Attorney before we go to the board members, please.
Mr. Vice Chair, I don't have any questions at this time.
I have a question. The likelihood, I know you've talked about the 25% contingency fee, what is the likelihood of the court ordering additional attorney fees?
Yeah. So what there could be at, at point is there's also what's called a common benefit fund fee, that, and that is not an attorney fee, it's to reimburse the time and costs for the bell, the bellwether work. So the example that I like to use when I'm talking about this is, so for the Juul litigation, there ended up being a court-ordered common benefit fee of 7%. And so that was to reimburse the $10-plus million in costs that was expended by the, the six school districts that were litigating the case. So that, that does occur, and that's also another reason why we do it at a reduced rate, so you're still below the, what could be the normal 40%.
And that can also include a shared cost for expenses, correct?
Yeah, and normally, just due to the amount of districts I represent, it ends up being less than 3%.
And have they decided who the bellwether- And have they decided who the bellwether states are or districts are?
No. No, that will not occur for, I'd say probably another six to nine months.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments? Okay. Do you mind if I ask a question or comment if anyone doesn't have anything else? So thank you for your presentation, Mr. Shinnoff. I know we're pre-litigation kind of at this point, so I'll be careful what I ask. So I agree, social media companies, obviously, there, there is a lot of harm that has been done and has, you know, has occurred. Obviously, a lot of things going on. You talked about mechanisms, you talked about parental controls, you talked about age verification, which is great, but I mean, there's, there's ways around that, obviously. So you brought up content. My question is, from a mechanism standpoint, what can really be held accountable to these social media companies? What can actually be accomplished? Because you can, you can try to get money out of them, you said, to send a message. You can send a message, talked about parental controls, but what else? Because you keep talking about content, so. And obviously, there's a component also of parent and personal responsibility to that. So if you could answer that question, please.
Yeah. So what we're trying to do is to make sure that there's filters in place. So if, if when you're going and signing up and you're advising you're, you're under a certain age or if you're in a certain age range, that the content is, goes to that age range, that we're not going and pushing the harmful and divisive content. Because that's, that is what's keeping them on. And that's what the studies show of what's keeping them on. So if we can go and make sure that they're, they're changing that, and so whether that be, so the best example that they gave in what this whistleblower advised is with Instagram. So if you're a, a woman or a young female and you're, you're on Instagram, you're going to go and be shown images regarding body images and get, and go in to compare yourself and be invited to groups regarding body image. And so that was part of what they're advising is that they know that that's something that's, psychologically, they've gone and studied and they've said, well, that's going to attract that age range. That's what's going to keep them on their platform. But at the same time, we know there's a negative effect that, to that because there's, there's going to be the comparing and going, people liking and people going to do that. So if we can go and change, force them to change the algorithm to make sure that they're not going and targeting tho, those youths because they know of the harm to it, then we can do that. And that's what the court order, if we can get that, will enforce to make sure they're doing it. And then we will have experts in place who can advise on, here's what, here's what we can do to go and change it, to make sure that we're dealing with the mental health component as well as the benefit of the social media as well. Because they're not going to be going away.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No.
I do. Mr. Schiff, could you please forward all of the school districts that you represented in the Juul case?
Yeah.
And have you represented a school district that is close to 100,000 students?
Yes.
If you could send that, I would appreciate that, as well as any districts in the state of Florida.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just to kind of, to let you know, already in this litigation, there, I do represent already three different school districts in the state of Florida. So there's Volusia, Okeechobee, and Sumter. So there, I already do represent three, three school districts in, in the state of Florida in this. And just to also let you know, the defendants in this case are not only Meta, it's also TikTok, Snapchat, and YouTube. Because we're trying to, because this case is a case of dealing with a K through 12 issue, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask another question. Those three districts that you represent, are they part of the multi-district complaint that was filed?
Yeah. So we're, we're filing, each case is, complaints filed individually. We've already filed last week for Volusia.
Are they part of the case that's pending in Northern California at this time?
Yeah. All the cases are, there's a direct filing order, so we, we file every case directly into the Northern District of California.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrica.
If I may, Mr. Chair, direct a question to Attorney Dupree Bruno. What are our next steps here as a board, please?
Well, first, what I would like to know from the board is whether or not you have any interest in even moving forward with participating in any type of class action suit or mass action suit relating to social media. So that's, that's really the direction that I need from the board.
So, may I?
Go ahead.
So on those lines, I, I just, I find this to be a much more difficult case to prove than Juul because we had the, the nicotine or cigarette litigation prior to that. So we had that as a precedent. There is no precedent here. And it, from what I understand, there is no precedent here. And isn't, isn't there some parental responsibility here that really would make it difficult to prove that they've done anything wrong because parents are giving their kids devices at the age of eight and not supervising them? For example, am I crazy or?
No.
I mean, I know you don't want to answer that question, but.
No. I, I mean, I, I do think that is definitely a valid defense for the, the social media outlets to be able to utilize. I certainly agree with that. I would defer to Mr. Schiff in terms of what is the legal theory that you would utilize to be able to succeed on a particular action like this, given the question that we know that in the tobacco cases and, which was very similar to the Juul cases, that is different. But I also heard you say something that occurred in the last three months in terms of Supreme Court decisions. So if you can explore that a little bit for my board members, I would appreciate it.
Yeah. So, so I appreciate you bringing that up because what this case is, is it is a semi-product liability case. Because we're not, we're not suing, and that, that brings to the issue of the immunity of the Supreme Court. No matter what the Supreme Court decides, whether these companies do have immunity or not, that immunity is strictly for third-party content. We're not suing them for third-party content. We're suing them for their conduct, their, their addictive algorithm, their product. And so that, what we're claiming is similar to the Juul and to the tobacco, that they've created a very harmful addictive product. They're failing to warn about the harms of their product. They're not putting the steps in place to go and make it safe for the youth, and they're not doing any warnings. So that is our precedent to our case. Our precedent is opioids, tobacco, Juul. That, that is the precedent of our case because we're, the way we framed it. So whether the Supreme Court decides they have immunity or not, we still believe, they're going to argue it, they're going to use it as a defense, they're going to use the parents as a defense. They used parents as a defense too in Juul. They said, parents should have been responsible for making sure their children were not using vaping devices as well. We expect them to use that. But that, that is going to be the argument of, of it, that they have created a harmful product, they're failing to warn, and that, that they are responsible as a result of that.
And Attorney.
Go ahead.
No, no, you go. I was going to say, Attorney Shinnoff, can you please also explain to the board, what is their exposure? Should they not be successful or should they decide to move this forward? What is it that the board can expect and what is it that the board can expect if we lose? What, what's the exposure?
Uh, there's no financial exposure to the district. So if, so, and that's the way our contract reads, completely contingency. The exposure is on my firm for putting all, up all the fees and all the costs that there is, we end up, there, we end up spending all this money and time and there's no financial award at the end. The only risk to the district is the time, is the time of the staff. So if you're a non-bellwether case, is the time of completing the discovery questionnaire, gathering the documents, and then there is no reward. So there is, there is no financial exposure to the district.
I forgot what I was going to ask, but I'll remember and I'll come back. If you could come back to me, Mr. Chair, please. Thank you.
Go ahead. Ms. Juvenelli.
Thank you. I, I just have a couple of questions, and this may be really kind of for the board as well. I mean, is it our role to get involved in something like this when, I think there's some legislation in Florida right now where the governor is trying to stop, I think it's, I think maybe TikTok or something going on during the school day that we could, that's what our purview is. That's what, you know, I want to say our jurisdiction, you know, parents really are the ones that, I, I kind of agree with Ms. Patrica on that. So I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, is this our role as a board to get involved in something like this? And what would, even if you're successful, then I, I think we would benefit regardless, right? I mean, so, so what's the upside? Is that we would, we would get, I guess, monetary money for being involved in the, in the suit? So that's what I was trying to figure out. What's the upside for us? Thank you.
Of course. So you have to understand, we're going against four or five of the largest companies in the world. And for us to show the nationwide impact that these companies are having, we need school districts across the country to show the harm. And it's not just a couple of school districts in California or a couple of other school districts that we're trying to show that this is a nationwide harm. And that's, and that's where every district's involvement, who can be involved, is important because you all play a role to share the story of what, of what your campuses are experiencing. Because we can't share the story without districts. We can't show the evidence without the districts. And that's why whether you're a 100-person school district to an over 100,000-person school district, we're trying to show the impact and it not being a regional, a regional issue or anything like that. And that's the importance you play. And also the importances of public entities. The, the public entities are the ones that can help create the change. While our hope is legislation will happen, public entities through these causes of action, we can go and get the injunctive relief. And that's, that's the other important aspect of this litigation and the role that school districts play in this. And, and absolutely, we want to also provide you the financial resources as part of this litigation to go and deal with the issues as a result because, you know, as my 10-plus years of experience, knowing how, you know, the financial abilities of districts to go and try to find resources to go make changes is not as easy to go and move money from one place to another when trying to deal with certain issues.
So I, I think I understand. So it's basically being unified in power and numbers and, and the value in that. All right. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Persens.
Yeah. The way I understand it, to sort of also answer your question, is the financial reward, you're sort of targeting maybe more social workers, things that would definitely help our district. You know, that the money could be used, just as Juul's going to be used for different things, reward. So there, there is an upside more than just the legislation type thing, which would be a help whether we're in it or not, but for that reason, I'm leaning to going forward.
Ms. Patrica.
Yeah. So it, this is, doesn't really have anything to do with my decision, but this is federal court, right? Federal court, right?
Yes.
And is that contributory or comparative negligence jurisdiction?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Schiff because it's California law.
Yeah. So normally, normally they use, because it's going to be in California, they'll use California law, which is comparative.
Okay. Yeah. I don't see downside if we're not out of pocket. I mean, I do think parents have a responsibility, but if it can get us resources to improve mental health services for kids, I would assume that's what we're going for, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, we need that help without social media. So.
Yeah.
That's, that's my feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Langford Fleming.
I just want to go on record, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And now that you guys have asked so many great questions, I think we all understand a little bit more as to why you're here and what you're asking of us and to make this more of a unified effort across the nation. Me being a mother of three children, I know the battle of social media. Unfortunately, even when I'm in schools, I still see children with earbuds in their ear walking through, heads always down, not communicating. I always say, I'm so glad I grew up in the 70s and 80s and did not have to grow up with social media. So I don't have the, I didn't have the pressures that I feel like these kids have and the anxiety that they're having with social media. I do completely believe that there is an algorithm targeting not just children, but adults also. So with that being said, if there is no financial gain, I am willing to fight for the minds and the hearts of the children of Lee County when it comes to this particular topic. But like Mrs. Patrica has said a few times up here, we need parent and family buy-in too. Our responsibility is the seven and a half hours a day out of the school day that the district or the school board can be responsible for it. We need the help of families too. So I think that's something that we need to just put out there. And I know the struggle. Like I said, I'm, I'm a mom of, of three children and it's, it's easy to forget your child is on the phone and it's easy to forget to check it. But, so I just wanted to go on record that I, if there's no financial risk, I, I don't see a burden on the school district other than it to help us in the future. So, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I would just like to say thank you as well. And I would also suggest that we look into this further. Thank you. That Mr. Dupree Bruno would. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So going forward, it seems we do not have an objection to moving forward with a further discussion. That would not be, at least, and I'll confer this with the board attorney, not tied to this particular law firm, just looking at this subject matter going forward, if I'm correct, Madam Board Attorney.
Thank you. That's what I needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may we have a five-minute recess, please?
Yes. We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll return at 2:06 PM. Thank you. We're at 2:09 right now. We had to discuss something briefly. My apologies. We're going to begin, restart the meeting and we're at public comment, item C, if Madam Board Attorney can handle that.
I think we have one guardian, item number three, on the agenda.
My apologies. So it's, let's proceed to item number three, which is policy briefing on the Guardian program in regards to policy 2.113, the first reading. That will be with Mr. Ramirez and Chief Newland. My apologies on this. Proceed.
Mr. Vice Chair, before my team begins, I just want to take the opportunity to remind the public that we are in the process of developing a Guardian program for the school districts of Lee County based upon the resolution that you passed, asking me to move forward in taking a look at what it would take and how we would go about devising a policy and then from the policy, go ahead and establish the procedures and the expectations of the program. Chief Newland and Mr. Ramirez have been truly the point people for this project. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to put the survey out, to solicit some information from our current employees as to who might want to be a participant. Thank you for that opportunity to do that before this briefing, because if we continue down this path, we're going to need a set of volunteers that are ready to enter into the sheriff's training program. However, we will not move into that until we have adopted all the correct policies and procedures surrounding that. So just want to thank you. And just for the public edification, I wanted them to understand if they'd heard about a survey, that we are just simply surveying for interest at this time. And the team is going to work today on the policy on a first read with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Real quick, before you proceed, I also want to remind my fellow board members and myself, we obviously, this is safety and security, so we need to all be careful in our comments and questions for certain things. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Before I start and talk about the Guardian policy, I did want to point out, we have a couple of guests here today from the sheriff's office. I'm working with on the Guardian program, on the policy, Commander Paul Cummings and Captain Scott Griffith. They were here, came here today just to be here, listen to the comments. And again, they've been working with us almost day-to-day since you gave the approval to work with the sheriff's office. I did want to start on the Guardian policy. If you look at page one, I want to cover a couple of things before answering any questions. If you look at the definition on page one, you'll see school safety specialists. I just want to point out by statute, that's actually who I am by the statute, even though I'm the executive director, that's my title by Safe Schools. Going down to school safety specialist on page one, that's covering one to two. That's going to cover most of your areas as far as responsibilities that comes in for me in regards to the Guardian program. However, I do want to go to number two. On page two, there is line 55 and 56. It talks about an agreement that the guardians will sign when issued equipment and accepting all procedures and applicable procedures and responsibilities. So we talk about specifics as far as what the guardian and how he or she will carry their weapon, things they will have. That's where the specifics and detail will come into play and that form they sign with the sheriff's office. If you go down to the end of page two, you'll see school guardians. This is when we get into more of the responsibility and things that the guardians will be responsible to do based on the statute. That's covered from page two to page five. When you get to page four, I do want to point out a couple statutes that when you're reading this, it may jump out. So on page four, number 17, it talks about Florida State Statute 790.174. Basically, what that means is a statute that covers safe storage of firearms. There is a statute that is requirement that you could be negligent by not properly storing your firearms. That's what that statute covers. If you go to page five, this is when we get into the general procedures. A lot of the statutes it'll cover under the first one, the very bottom page five, which is subsection A, which is under line 215, you'll see a Florida Statute 30.15. That's based, that's the power and duties that establish the Guardian program through the sheriff's department. That's what that talks about when you look at that statute. And then going to the last page, or page six of seven, a lot of these are the general procedures that reflect on statutes, again, as far as what are we allowed to do based on statute. For example, if you look at line 241, which is statute 776.012, that talks about your threat to use force, your response to use force based on what the guardian can and cannot do. So there's some things that we're referencing that by statute, we can and cannot do based on the general procedures. And then that basically, that covers the general part of the policy. Like I said before, you have your definition page, you have your part that talks about the responsibility of my position, the guardian themselves, their responsibility, what they have to meet as far as standards, as far as requirements of training. And then it gets into the general procedures and statutes that this falls under of the Guardian program itself. So I didn't want to read line for line. I just wanted to point a couple of those things out and then I'll stand by for any questions. Any questions on the policy?
Sorry, Chief. I thought you were pointing something else out of this. My apologies. Mr. Superintendent, any comments or questions before we go to board members?
Nothing. No, sir.
Okay. Board, questions, comments? Mr. Persons?
I know you've been working with the sheriff. Has he come up with a number of hours that he will be requiring our SROs or, I mean, not the SROs, I'm sorry, the guardians to train? I know it's a minimum of, what, 140 hours?
Yeah, minimum of 144 hours. I can tell you that right now, we're talking around the area of over 100, well, around 160 hours right now. So it'll be over the minimum. Again, that is a start requirement, but there will be ongoing training as well beyond that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Patrica?
I have a whole list.
I will.
The purpose of that is basically, when they go through training, as we know, a big part of that's going to be firearm training. So if they happen to discharge their firearm anywhere but training, that must be reported. That's the intent of that section. Within, that's what it talks about, the 72 hours. But I can, we can, I can make a comment with that, what you're, the four, and we'll look at that afterwards as well.
So if you could have it say what you just said back in the group.
Okay, thank you.
So this doesn't make sense to me. Same contradictions. So the district panel and all the fellow representatives, applications stature, all applications stature, if I may. The superintendent along with the CFP or the nine, initial application, and then the superintendent, the superintendent, the superintendent. Any other CFPs then, Justice Superintendent?
I know the intent of this section was for us to work, to put a team together, a group or committee to go through the applications, obviously, make sure that whoever we're choosing to be a guardian applicant, both sides will agree with based on what we're reviewing for that applicant's background. And then obviously, the other part would be, the final does go to the superintendent. We want to make sure whatever we are recommending as the guardian, that all parties are agreed to that specific person. We can change the wording if it's confusing.
That doesn't make sense to me. Number one. Number two, I'd like to always consider whether we want what will be an elected official to be the final decision maker regarding approval or not. I think if there are some variables in place, knowing that we have an elected somebody in place, and we're not necessarily, there's no guarantee regarding the qualification or anything of a future superintendent, so is this where we want to put some variables? I'm not comfortable with an elected superintendent being the final, he, I'll, they'll, and all in terms of who and who hasn't on our council. So I'd like to see a change there, but I'm more of a seven point.
Real quick, going to follow up on that, who would you, at that point, then?
That's a really good question. Who would I? I would think that I would want some law enforcement expertise involved in making the final decision. Superintendent?
Go ahead. First and foremost, I don't disqualify any of the opinion regarding the potential of an elected superintendent, but I would think we also need to be clear, and maybe we need to have a briefing regarding what the statutory requirements are for an elected superintendent and their relationship to the board. That individual who will be duly elected is still in charge of the operational issues of the school district and the board still retains its policy, its policy right. So this would be the appropriate person to finalize a decision and ensure, I think the intent of this final sentence is really important. In the other superintendents I've spoken to that have a Guardian program, there is a denial that can come from the superintendent and that decision is final. I think the intent, and we can wordsmith this, but I think the intent would be, there would be the review of the initial applications. The superintendent, along with the sheriff's office, would make some determinations as to the requirement. And a decision to deny would come from the superintendent and that decision would be final. So, but I think we might need to explore a little bit more as we think about future work sessions. We might want to think about our briefings, an opportunity for us to really begin to delve into what that looks like for the board and for the individual who may be in this chair in '24, '25.
I would appreciate that because I see these as different. We don't, we don't have an agenda item that approves volunteers, and this is essentially a volunteer position. We don't have a job description where we can put some guardrails in place surrounding who the superintendent can and can't hire. I mean, we have this policy and that's it. So I'm just, it feels like free rein not knowing who's going to be sitting in the seat that you occupy right now, Dr. Burnier, and this is not about you. This is about, I know you know this is not about you, but I want to say it out loud. This is about not having any idea who's going to be in that seat two years from now, four years from now, 10 years from now.
I don't disagree with you, but I think there's an opportunity for us, just like in the process of refreshing a strategic plan, for us to get ahead of this in a planning purpose related to, we know something is coming. We should be prepared for it. I mean, I unfortunately know that June is coming, meeting with the county in the next couple of weeks to have the discussion about the dreaded H-word. But it's necessary in preparation for hurricane season. We have to be cognizant and be planning ahead. We know there's going to be an elected superintendent. I think it would behoove us to take some time of our workshops and of our briefing times to have some open discussions about what you see and how you see this moving forward and what the legal implications are for both the board and for the individual who may occupy the seat. So I'm happy to do that if that's the board's desire. We could seek our internal or external counsel to help us have some conversation regarding that.
And then that last line, I think I'm still on seventy, whatever. The decision is not to be, the what, the people that is not, Dr. Burnier, makes a decision that is based on racism, based on discrimination, based on, if we are obvious to the board, that's something that's not, I'm thinking more based on transparency. How can a decision that would not be applicable be made in the board? We have a responsibility in those circumstances, but ultimately, it's a decision that's a serious challenge. I'll stop now when you move on. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Persons?
Well, the way I'm reading it, it should be the denial of the initial application, but this is the initial application. They still have to go through the whole process of 160 hours and will be certified by the sheriff to actually be a guardian there. So I'm not worried about, even if someone badly gets picked, they won't make it through. I can guarantee you that.
I do think it's worth me weighing in here to just clarify if we're on the same page. The way this policy is written is similar to other school districts who have a guardian in place. And that is the superintendent's decision for the denial of an initial application is final, not appealable. Upon that denial, the person would not proceed into the training. This would eliminate them from that, from day one. So I just want to make sure we're on that same page, because yes, if somebody was approved, then yes, they still have an immense amount of work to go through. And from what I've been able to receive from the sheriff's office and through Chief Newland, is there's ample opportunity for these people to still not make it, because the standard by which they're going to be required is extremely significant. So I do want to make it clear to the public that this particular line would give that decision of a denial, that would prevent the person from moving forward.
Board, mind if I follow up with Ms. Patrica? Is that all right? Okay. Understand what you're saying, Ms. Patric, in regards to that, and if my understanding, again, from what I'm hearing, is chief, the final say overall at the end will be the sheriff's, correct?
Yeah, it's his program, the sheriff's.
Yeah.
Their program, yes. Again, the whole intent of this was that as we go with the applications together, but the final say does come with the superintendent.
Oh, okay.
As far as the initial application.
Yeah, but that was talking about the final. And the reason I say that is I understand what you're saying, but... And the reason I say that is, I understand what you're saying, but the sheriff is also an elected official, so the same issue would come about. So, I mean, the resolution is then up to the voters at that point, so that's my comments on that. Anyone have any questions and comments to continue on?
I don't know.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Well, I, well, I agree what Ms., I understand what Ms. Patrica's saying, and I kind of understand her reservations regarding some of this. I also understand what you're saying, because ultimately, we don't get involved in the day-to-day business. We don't, we don't, we don't pick coaches, we don't pick, we're going to go pick who's a guardian. This is a voluntary, as well as like when people coach, and where people are, what was it, in some of the clubs, where they lead the clubs and stuff like that. So I, we don't get involved in that day-to-day business. So I caution us, because, you know, we do have a definite, you know, what our roles are as board members, and we need to really think about that. And I think we do have to leave it up to the experts, and I believe that, and trust in that completely. And the superintendents may be privy to some information that would, ultimately, that initial application would be like a no way, but they're still going to be an employee of the district. And so I think that's important for that to stay in his, I think, in his wheelhouse, if that makes sense. That, my opinion, I think. So, thank you.
Questions, comments, anyone else? Ms. Jordan?
Are we on, other questions, are we on the same? Okay, well, I have to agree with Ms. Patrica as well. I am very concerned about that. Also, I have quite a few questions as well, so, again, stop me, whatever that looks like.
I will.
As far as, when I'm looking at the policy, I went back and I looked at the old one, I took that one all apart, then I had to redo the other one, so I apologize for that. Page three and number seven. The district will treat all required training hours as regular duty hours. So I thought when we had spoke about this, this is, this is volunteer, but yet we're doing this on a workday where they're being compensated. So I was a little bit confused, unless I am misreading that paragraph.
I think the original intent was, based on when we can actually do the training, in order to get this completed, if they're actually working, but can attend the training instead of being at their current position, it'd be the same thing, wouldn't be, at least we're receiving their, you know, they're not receiving any extra income, but if they're not working, they don't get paid for not, if they're not, they're off, they don't get paid for that.
Right, so, thank you for that. Right, I understood that part. So if I am, I work in a school, and I'm doing my job, so I would, how do I do my job at school and then go to this training for 144 hours of training, while I'm doing my job at the school? And being compensated for the job that I'm doing at school, as well as being somewhere else? I don't know how you, how you're in two places at the same time.
It's, well, it's not, it wouldn't be easy, but based on the timing when the academy would take place, is part of it. So timing is very important, because originally, we look at this as a summer academy. But also, when we look at the applicants, that also could be, you know, based on, depending how many interests we get, we look at those and vet those, of who would have that, who would be able to do that as well.
Okay, the intent was to allow, this language would allow for temporary duty for an employee, in order to attend the training, obviously trying to align, not knowing what that schedule will be, as the sheriff develops that schedule, that it would allow for just that. Otherwise, we would be limited to the number, to the times when employees could actually go for any additional required training, so that language would allow for an employee that may be someone not assigned to class, and the ability to put in for temporary duty for that day to attend training, to give some flexibility, that's, that was some of the thought process.
Correct. So, but in the policy also, it states that you have to, you cannot miss the training, so you have to be at these trainings. So that would be consecutive days of training, and then, so when I'm looking, again, this is volunteered, plus the $500 stipend, so they are being paid for that, and then they are a volunteer-paid employee, because they're our employees. And then going from there is, where does the liability fall? Because I don't see any of that in our policy. Where does it fall for that individual person? Where does the insurance for, for the, does our insurance go up for those individual people who are guardians? As well as, what else was that? So those are, those are a couple of questions that we have to get answers to. Then also, on the, there was another one. There is the one with, okay, page five, line 23, that they, the guardians will not, they cannot take their, the guardians will not carry issued firearms off school property, but then in the next sentence, line eight, 189, it says that they keep it at their homes. So how do they not take it off the property, and then how do they keep it at home? It's, and then we give them the box to take it home in, and leave it in their car. So...
Yes, when they're on school property, obviously, they can, they can carry their firearm that's been issued by the sheriff's office. The idea is, when they get into, when they leave school property, they can't be, they cannot be wearing that firearm. So that's why, two things recommended. Number one, it's got to be properly carried in the car, we want it locked in the lockbox, and then when they get home, it's got to be properly stored in the home, as I referenced earlier, by that statute that requires you to properly carry, keep your gun safe at your own house.
Okay, and then...
We don't want them, we don't want them stopping at a 7-Eleven or something with their firearm on them, when they're leaving school property.
And then the district provides that box for them? It's not from the sheriff?
Typically, you come, any equipment would come through the sheriff's office, through the Aaron Fies Grant Program. So that's, equipment, well, any equipment that's applied that we discuss should be that or reimbursable.
Okay, because it does say district, like, we are providing that. So if it's faulty, and somebody can get in it, I'm just, wanted to bring that up. And, let's see what the other one was. And then line 241, six of seven, and I know these are, are volunteer guardians are force multiplier for active shooters, but then on line 241, page six, it says, "The guardian, pursuant to Florida Statute 776.012, a guardian is justified, justified in using objectively reasonable force." So is that just, if they think in breaking up fights, or whatever, they think is taking place at the school?
Well, the statute itself refers to threat of use of force, so it wants you to use the force that's appropriate, so that the idea, yes, is to bait the active assailant, but it also doesn't want you to use that same type of force, and that doesn't meet that same requirement.
Okay. I'm sorry, I...
That's what they go, they go through the training. So part of the training they go through is, is use of force training as well. So they use proper use of force. In other words, we don't want them carrying, using a firearm and using improperly on somebody that's not, doesn't create a threat, as an active assailant, which is the purpose of why we bring in guardians to our property as a force multiplier.
Yeah, but, and the reason I was asking, because it does just, I guess it's my fault that I did not read what the statute was, because it just says, "If present during a physical altercation between individuals." So to me, that was not a active shooter, that's just two kids, or whomever, fighting, and then they would be able to step in if they deemed to do so. Is that...
Yeah, I'm sorry. So yeah, so it's two parts to this. One is using proper force, basically talking about the active assailant. The other part is, the same thing with this, is like we do now with our safety security specialists, is using the force, like, if you're going to break up a fight, for example, as mentioned here, it's the appropriate force required to do that, not use your firearm are the words. It's, that's why the use of force statute is mentioned in that section. And that could be anything from presence, to verbal, passive, active, and up.
Real quick, Mr. Superintendent wants to try to...
Just to try to add and not confuse the situation anymore, but this is the same statutory authority that a principal operates under, teachers, deans, athletic directors. We are allowed to intervene with the objectively, an objective amount of reasonable force to protect the safety of our children. They, this line in the policy provides that same opportunity to a guardian, who may be a dean of students, or may be an athletic director, right? They can still, they can still work with their, with their student body and their students as they always have. The critical component becomes the fact that they have a weapon attached to their hip, and they have to be clear, and the training revolves around this, I'm sorry, the training addresses this specifically, that it has to be an objectional, it has to be a reasonable amount of force. And again, to some extent, especially with other educators and certified teachers, they don't have to weigh in to a fight and risk physical injury, but they should be at least asking the children to stop and allow whomever feels like they can get in between our young men or young women to do, to have that role. This allows the guardian to do that, but prevents them from using deadly force to break up a fight.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, I guess, there is, to me, we still have that confusion of the guardian as a singular person versus a individual who is there, already there at the school, doing a job. So this person is not going to be standing on the corner of a hallway, they're still working in the school building, and are, they underneath of the, the principal as their leadership during, during the day.
That's correct.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Jordan, I'll let you finish up on this, if there's something, okay, I was going to move on and come back if not. Questions, comments from the rest of fellow board members at this point? Anyone else? Okay. Did you have something?
I've got a whole list.
Okay, that's, I'm waiting to see if there's anybody else, so before I proceed. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Uh, line 137. I can't remember why. I guess, I don't know what safety rules and procedures are. Appointed guardians to adhere to, oh no, that was grammar, never mind, I'll send those separately. 139, what does line 139 mean?
The, I think the intent of number 14 was, they still have to go, they still have to abide by the policies that they abide by with now, currently. Doesn't change anything. As mentioned before, they're still, they're employees of the school district, the policies don't go away, so they still have to follow all the policies they currently follow now. We can, and if not, we can also add more to that, or specific policies if needed.
I didn't turn my microphone on, sorry. Yeah, it just, I mean, everybody that works for the district has to follow the policies. I didn't know if that meant something different, or above and beyond what would normally be the case. Line 145. I think this one was grammar as well, never mind, I'll send that separately. Lines 161 through 162. The question I have here is authorized by district or LCSO?
I'm sorry, what was the specific question to that one?
The purpose of a guardian is to defend life from an active threat on any district property. Guardians are responsible for providing security and safety services. I would like there to be a distinction here. I believe guardians are getting their authority from the LCSO. I think the LCSO is setting forth what the training requirements are, and without the LCSO running this program, we don't have guardians in our schools. So on line 161, where it says guardians are not authorized by the district to enforce any laws, I would like it to say the district or LCSO to enforce any laws. It might seem like a stupid distinction without a difference, but to me, it makes a difference, because the LCSO is what gives them life, and we as a district don't have the ability to tell, to have employees enforce laws anyways. So I'd like to see that added, if I could.
Okay.
Uh, line 175, self-report, what, please?
Currently, your, currently, your board policies require all employees to report certain law enforcement violations and other violations that concur out in the community within a 24 to 48-hour period of time. So this is an alignment, if we could, if it would help, we could align school board policy and actually use the number of the policy, so it becomes clearer as to what they are being required to comply with.
We'll add that in.
Thank you. Lines 185 through 186. My question here is school or district building? Because I think throughout the policy, we refer to the authority of guardians on district property, and here we specifically refer only to a school. So should we be consistent and have district building on that line? I haven't read it again, but...
Yeah, we'll go through that. I see it says school property, we'll go through, make sure it's all consistent throughout the policy, there's no conflict.
I only have two left, or three left. Line 202, what does this mean?
The intent of that is to report something, something they may be witness or involved in that doesn't fall under purview. Let us know, something they're involved with that they should not be doing, or something they witnessed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So basically, it's something that they're not, they're not responsible for, something they are not a guardian, obviously, has certain responsibilities, so if they witness or see something, they're still responsible to report that, whether it be to my position, the SRO, or administration.
Earlier in the policy, this policy speaks to the fact that a point, a guardian cannot act in a law enforcement manner. So the guardian may suspect that there's a situation or an incident that's occurring in a hallway where a student is distributing something. He, he or she may feel that it could be drug or other paraphernalia. He certainly can use, or she could use reasonable force to stop the student, detain the student, but he can't, or she cannot make an arrest, right? That would have to be brought to law enforcement, specifically.
I'm sorry, so you just said that a guardian could detain the person, but could not make an arrest?
Same way as a dean would. We would, we would ask the student to come with us, we'd collect their backpack, we'd walk down to the main office, and we turn it over to the dean and the SRO, because it's important for the school resource officer to be present when things come out of a bookbag to ensure chain of evidence.
Okay, and then, if I could just, my last comment, I promise, Mr. Chair, going back up to line 89, I hear you, I hear what everybody is saying here with regard to the superintendent being the final decision-maker, but could we, as a board, put some parameters into the policy that the superintendent would have to follow in the approval or the denial? I think, I hear what you're saying, it's not our job to figure out who the guardian should or should not be, but it is our job to make sure that we don't have an elected superintendent that's sort of doing this willy-nilly, based on a personality contest, or based on whatever that elected official brings to the seat. So this is our opportunity to put those parameters in place. I think if we could put some parameters and say, you can't deny on the basis of, you know, blue hair, or whatever, I don't know what the, what the parameters would be, but if we could look at other policies across the state and see if they have some parameters in there, it would just make me feel a lot better in voting yes on this. I want to vote yes, this is an area where I need a little bit more teeth in the policy in order to get me to a yes. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Juvenelli?
One question I have, would the guardian be a part of the threat assessment team for that particular school? Would they be involved in that, so they're aware and apprised of, you know, something that someone, you know, that might be a threat in, in part of the process, you know, process and be a part of the team?
We have discussed it based on their current position, as since they're volunteering as a guardian, they may already be on that team, but it's something we can look at if they're not part of the team.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Ready, we can, we can talk about that.
I mean, I think everybody that would be, for safety of the school, need to be apprised of certain situations, and, I don't know, but we know that that's been, that's been the issue from the past, you know, from Parkland and so forth, we know that. We know that there was evidence prior to, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Briefly, then we gotta move on.
This is the only opportunity that we have to actually speak on this matter to one another out loud. So my question is, Chief Newland, is, since the beginning of this, we've not heard from the sheriff. And I know you're saying you're working with the sheriff's department. This will be, I mean, he will be responsible for this. His office will be responsible for this. We, and I know we've not yet heard from, I have not heard from him that this is good, bad indifference or whatever, which to me, means a great deal because he's the one who's gonna have to execute, make sure that everything is where it needs to be. So in working with this, you are working with, I know you said the gentleman that you would be, that you are working with right now to do this policy, but it just would have been really nice to have him say yes. I, I feel this is, we're going in the right direction and that this is the safest that we can be for our staff, our students, for parents, for everybody. So I just needed to say that, so thank you.
I understand. And beyond the captain commander as well, we work with, I work with a larger group at the main office, the sheriff's office as well, but I'll, I'll communicate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Just adding, just adding into that, Ms. Jordan, I can tell you the sheriff has made public statements in support of this multiple times, so. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? I know, Mr. Superintendent, I believe, had one.
No, I'm, no, Mr. Chair, I'm good. That piece of the conversation just solved that, my question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Thank you, Chin. I appreciate all your hard work on this. Thank you to you guys as well as the Lee County Sheriff and Lee County Sheriff's Office for putting the safety of our schools and kids first. I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is actually public comment now. Item C. So, Ms. DePree Bruno, could you address public comment, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, it does not appear that there is any public comment for the briefing today.
Okay. Moving on to item D, board member, good of the order and board member comment. I will start on the opposite end this time with Ms. Langford Fleming.
I have none.
Mr. Persons?
I have none at this time.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
I have a little bit. Actually, just two things real quick. I attended the Shack, which is the health, I don't even know what it stands for right off the top of my head. But however, they had ACT there as a speaker last week, and they gave out cards, and I had everyone, I had, I had, I got extra and had it, had it put on your desk, each of your desk. And this information that they had was, I thought was really important because it, I want to make sure it's up there. It was about, it was about what Kristen, our last student rep had spoke about in champion, human trafficking. And, and then, you know, and so I thought it was something that was interesting, and they were going to reach out to him and also work on some things for the district with this information. Because they had, they had like really good, just little cards and stuff that could be taught and brought up in classrooms and maybe like at the beginning of this, like the announcements in the morning and that kind of thing. So that was something that I thought was interesting and how, to help kids deal with when they're approached in different ways. Because kids sometimes aren't, don't have that ability yet to really understand what is happening at the time, even if it's, you know, to do with sexual trafficking, trafficking and human trafficking and being, so I just thought that was important. So if y'all could read that, I thought it was something good that can come back around at some point with the district. Also, last night, Curriculum Advisory had another meeting, our last meeting for the year, and it was really interesting. I would suggest that y'all watch some of it. We had some good speakers again, well-attended, and it was recorded. And they really discussed the actual curriculum and instruction for the challenging of the books. And in no way is this book banning, but I think the challenge and the process for challenging books is really good that the district worked really hard on. And I really appreciate all the work that's done with Dr. Spire's staff because I think everybody was very pleased with it on both sides of the aisle, you know, and the process. So the process document. And I think it'll be coming before us soon, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. I have no comments. Mr. Superintendent?
Just have one item for the good of the order. I'm sorry, I have one item for the good of the order, and it's just a request of the board. Yesterday, actually on Friday, we received information regarding an amendment to a House bill which will make some, potentially if passed, make some changes related to our graduation requirements for this year's senior class. We have been and will provide you with the information I promised yesterday. We will provide you with the information as to how those concordant scores and the changes will positively impact our students, how many, and what it would do potentially for our graduation rate. I also have staff currently get some direction of whether I would be able to do that. I would be most appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Does the board have any objection to the superintendent's suggested course of action?
Just to clarify.
Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
That's Rep. Missoula's amendment, yes? Is that Rep. Missoula's amendment? Yeah.
Yes.
No objection. I appreciate the letter. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli, you had a? Okay. I hope you have your direction, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe I do. My team's ready.
Board of Attorney, DePree Bruno?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. We have a student performance at 5:45 tonight, followed by our action meeting at 6 o'clock. Seeing no other business come before this board, this meeting is adjourned at 2:54 PM. Thank you, everyone.